We're ready? All right, we'll do that again. Welcome, everybody, to the North Miami Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, January 3rd, 2019 at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, please be seated. We'll call the board members.
Chair Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each.
Present.
Commissioner Jason James.
Excused.
Commissioner Bob Pashon.
Present.
Commissioner Michael McDeermade.
Present.
We have quorum.
Alrighty, let's see, do we have any amendments to our agenda tonight? No? Okay. Then we'll call for approval of the minutes of November 14, 2018 meeting.
Move for approval.
Alright.
Second.
Mr. Ernst moves to approval, Mr. Pashon seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved, let's get this signed. In blue. Thank you. Alright, item three, communications. Tonight we have a presentation from the Public Works Department, updates by Mr. Whistler Pierre Lewis, Director. Yes?
Mr. Chair, this is at your request.
Yes.
And the Planning Commission request, the Public Works Director is here, he's willing to answer any questions you have and give you an update on items that you're particularly interested in, and Mr. Director.
Sir, you are on.
Good evening, Mr. Pierre Lewis, Public Works Director, Happy New Year to you all.
Happy New Year to you, sir.
Okay, we are having technical difficulties, I was going to navigate you through our capital improvements project website, however, I understand that the webpage is not displayed on the TV screens, however, I will inform you that we do have a link on the city's homepage which has all of the projects which are under construction or in planning at the moment. We also have completed projects on the website, I can go through a few of them if you'd like.
Yes, give us a verbal overview of things.
So, the first link is for the neighborhood improvements section, and one project of note is northeast 133rd Street between West Dixie and northeast 11th Avenue. At that location, we completed a streetscape improvement project, it included driveway approaches, swell improvements, drainage improvements, milling, resurfacing, crosswalks, planting of trees, and things of that nature. The other projects mentioned on that link is 125th Street Streetscape Improvements, the community tree plantings, downtown 125th Street Streetscape Improvements, the FPNL Street Light Upgrades, which you may have noticed throughout the city, we're improving our lighting system with LED lights, that's a project that we signed an agreement with FPNL, they should be completed with that project citywide during this calendar year.
Question on that?
Yes.
That's every neighborhood?
Yes, that is every neighborhood within the city limits.
Are they replacing, some of the older neighborhoods, of course, have the concrete poles, are they staying and just the light fixtures themselves being replaced?
Yeah, this project is only limited to the light fixtures, the poles is not part of it, it's something that FPNL will do on their own depending on the integrity of the pole, but we're focusing only on lighting fixtures.
So it's really basically change out the light bulb?
Right, change out the light bulb, and the fixture as well because the LED bulbs require a different fixture.
And they are quite bright.
Yes.
Yes, we have noticed on the west side, yes, it's big improvement.
We have a couple of traffic circles, the one on 131st and 10th Avenue northeast and 131st northeast 14th Avenue, those are in design, the design phase right now. We have 127th and 4th Avenue and 123rd and northeast 10th Avenue. We have a contractor on board for those projects, they should be starting very soon at those two locations. The Tressler Street Drainage Project, Tressler is the, it's also called northeast 17th Avenue, it's, Mr. Commissioner Each is very familiar with that area, it is a drainage improvement project, we secured a grant for that location, and it's similar to the other streetscape projects which includes improvements to the sidewalks, the swell areas, the drainage system, milling, resurfacing, striping, and tree plantings as well. And that, all those projects fall under neighborhood improvements. The next section...
That street that's just east of the railroad tracks?
Yes, that's it.
That's what we're talking about, right?
Yes, the street that goes diagonally north to east, yes.
When is that due to be finished?
That should be finished very soon, we're actually ahead of schedule for that project, I want to say we're three months from completion.
That's been like a two-year project, hasn't it?
No, it's going on in conjunction with the county project which is on northeast 16th Avenue, it's actually a separate project, the county's project started maybe a year and a half ago, this project started three or four months ago.
Okay, so the county's putting a drainage along 16th Avenue, not us, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I hope I live long enough to see that road done.
May I ask a question on Tressler Street? You have all those light warehouses over there, and you have parking on the swell, they park there continuously, I was walking through there the other day, why are they putting grass down again, why not do something that's gonna, in a couple of months, it's gonna be all dead again, why not put proper drainage in there to make the percolation system with cement or concrete or something else, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, that's a very good question, it was pointed out, it seems like there were a few locations where grass was called for, however, the majority of the project is called for the pervious pavers or the turf block, that's what's on the south or east side of the road, and we'll also install that wherever there's grass, so the plan is to have the turf block which is...
I'm sorry, what do you call them?
Sorry?
What was?
Turf block, it's similar to what was done right here on 123rd Street between 8th and 9th Avenue.
Okay.
It has a spacing in the middle to allow some grass, however, it's a block, a concrete block which would hinder the traffic.
Yeah, okay, I mean, there's grass out there, I was walking through the other day, and I said, this is nonsensical, they parked their trucks out there, the vans and...
Yeah, it is something that's being addressed, it will be changed.
Okay.
Something I'd like to add if you don't mind.
No, go ahead, Mr. Ernst.
A few months ago, just in my neighborhood, we had new sidewalks put in probably 10 years ago, then they put in beautiful oak trees, well, the oak tree roots spread out and they started eating into the brand-new sidewalks, I started noticing mine, and I called Public Works, and it took them a while, they did come out and they cut it, but I'm noticing that that's kind of like pretty much of a problem citywide, where we're having tree roots growing into our sidewalks, and I don't know if Public Works is keeping an eye on this, to try to remediate it by controlling the roots growing out, or if they're just waiting for somebody like myself to call and say, "I've got a, your sidewalks are being torn up by a tree in my swell area that you guys planted." Can, you know, is there some proactive measures that could perhaps be taken to start having Public Works or whoever, I understand Parks and Recreation actually, he told me that they're the ones that actually handles going out and taking care of the tree trimming, is that correct, and handling?
There has been a recent transition from the division that handles the trees to Public Works, that division was under Parks before, now it's under Public Works.
So you have that now?
Yes, now I'm supervising that division.
It's something that I think the department should start looking at because it's unfortunate, we have really nice sidewalks put in, and now all of a sudden I'm seeing them getting uplifted by the roots growing underneath there from the trees that the city planted in the newer swell areas, they did a great job going through a particular breeze swept area where I lived in.
Who's gonna handle the trimming, the fertilization, and all that other stuff?
All that has been moved under Public Works.
Okay, so now I have to call you then about my street?
You call me all the time.
No, I mean, there's trees and...
Yeah, sure.
A Roger went over to your department now, is that it?
Not Roger, Daryl, Daryl Payne.
They're all with you now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great, I'll give you a jingle.
You have him on speed dial, I gather?
Yeah, no, no, that's good, I was gonna call him.
So if I need him, I know to call you, okay.
And I've been for years complaining about when they come out and repair a sidewalk, they slap black asphalt rather than try to find a better-looking repair product of some sort to repair the sidewalk, and it really looks kind of, you know, it just doesn't look very good, there must be some type of a concrete that they could use to take care of that problem when they're repairing the sidewalks.
Yes.
I know it might be a cost factor, but at the same time, the asphalt really looks bad, and it just, that's gonna wear away after a while, too.
Right, we've tried, I forget the technical term, but shaving the sidewalks where the, they're lifted, where we would have the proper transition and eliminate the trip hazards, we've also, when it's possible, poured some concrete, but it really is a function of cost, as you mentioned, we, to call out a truck to replace one flag of sidewalk is really not cost-efficient.
But you do have a tripping problem.
Right, so the asphalt is what we've been doing now to eliminate the tripping hazard and securing and making it safe, I understand it's not aesthetically pleasing, but as we research, we come up with different methods, and maybe once we'll find something that's cost-effective, it will also be aesthetically pleasing, however, for now, the asphalt is what's working.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, continue, sir.
Okay, the next link is for public spaces, which lists the 135th Street Passive Park, Cagney Park North, Mocha Roof Replacement, and Pepper Park Playground Replacement.
Where's the 131st Street Passive Park?
That is the location east of Biscayne Boulevard, the medians east of, in Arch Creek East, there was a resolution passed maybe two years ago where we designated that area as a passive park, the first step is to install or make park improvements which will fall under Parks Department, and after the park is established, we will monitor it to install crosswalks for the safety of the pedestrians and the use of that area, but it's the area east of Biscayne Boulevard to the bridges, Arch Creek Bridges.
Okay, alright, thank you. On the Cagney Park, this has been years and years and years now, no real progress since the schools were built, where are we on that?
I, I'm not really involved, that doesn't fall under my purview, but I believe there have been negotiations between the city, the county, and the school board, different entities were to provide different sums of money, I don't know how far along they are if they've made any agreements, but I know they've been in discussions regarding the funding for the park.
For years, yeah, okay.
Are they dealing with the city manager, Planning Department, or?
It's mostly dealing with the city manager.
Parks and Recreation, yeah, okay.
And they've been negotiating there, they've been back and forth, up and down, that kind of thing.
Alright, maybe some year before we all retire, we'll see that done. Alright, go ahead, what's next?
The next link is the infrastructure link, we have the 140th Street Water Main Improvements, Northwest 12th Avenue Force Main Improvements, the Pump Station Rehabilitation Program, the Sanitary Sewer Model Updates, and the Water Plant Filter Replacement Project.
On the water plant project, what is this water filter situation gonna do for us?
The...
Is this just trading out parts, or is this actually a significant upgrade?
It is a significant upgrade, the water plant was built in the early 1960s, it has had no major improvement done since that point, in recent years, we've noticed that the efficiencies have decreased, the, we have not been able to produce the amount of water that we normally produce, which means that we purchase more water from Miami-Dade County. These improvements will help us produce the water that's to our permitted capacity, which is 9.3 MGD, because of the construction and the condition of the filters, we've been producing recently 2 MGD, 2 million gallons per day, when normally we would produce up to 8, so that means there's 6 million gallons per day that we're buying more from Miami-Dade because the filters are not operational.
Oh, that's significant.
Why, why, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Couple of issues, which I'm kinda confused on, this water department issue with the old plant goes back a number of years, we talked about reverse osmosis, the city that controls the water has the money, okay, and we're talking about saltwater intrusion, I recently, I think I gave you an article on San Diego, how they built the reverse osmosis plant, and they're doing fantastic with it, why did we not go to reverse osmosis, as the aquifer starts to diminish, more saltwater intrusion's gonna come in, what are we looking at, 20 years, 30 years before that plant goes out offline, or what?
Yeah, it's hard to put a specific timeframe on when or if we'll be impacted by saltwater intrusion, however, a few years ago, maybe five years ago, the council deferred the reverse osmosis project.
They don't want it.
They did not want it, they didn't want us to proceed with that project, at the time, it was estimated to be a $100 million project, and it was around the same time that the economy wasn't doing so well, so it was deferred at that time, and that's why we're not moving forward with that project.
Right now, we have the Biscayne Aquifer, and then we have the Florida Aquifer.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and now, where, we have permits to go into the Florida Aquifer also?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so, right now, the Biscayne Aquifer is putting out fresh water, not saltwater?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a timeline, and this is like kicking a can down the street, we're not, it doesn't make sense for the next generation to come up after us, and they're gonna have saltwater coming out there, instead of having a reverse osmosis plant that we should be building now, I mean, I'm whistling past the graveyard tonight, I guess, I mean, it is, okay.
Well, it's a legitimate question, Kenny, but it is a political decision based on budget, yeah.
There's nothing that we can do about it now, the other question I have, and you can maybe help me clarify this, I certainly don't understand this, we go to these different meetings, and we're told that we have enough for 5,000 more units in the city, that's all that we can pump, that's our capacity for water, then I look at the Jockey Club, FIU, and a few other places outside the city which are building, and I can't get a straight answer on it, what FIU builds, does that come against our 5,000 units, you know, does this get subtracted there, I don't understand that, what, you know, if that's all we can build, is 5,000 units, and the people that are in our water service area, they build, does that go against what we can build in the city?
The, yes, they are in our water service area, but however, I'm not familiar with the cap that you're referring to, the 5,000 unit cap.
Yeah, that's what we're told, it says, we can only go 5,000 more units in the city because that's all we have the capacity for, and I'm totally befuddled with this issue, I'm looking at it, saying, hey, the Jockey Club's gonna put up a new 30-story building, FIU's building it, we certainly can pump a heck of a lot more than enough of the 5,000 additional units, it doesn't make any sense, and this was based upon our infrastructure, am I correct, it was based upon the current infrastructure that we had that we can only produce enough for 5,000 units, and I'm saying, hey, FIU's gonna build 1,000 units out there, does that 1,000 come off of our 5,000?
Mr. Chair.
The Jockey Club's gonna build 100 new units, does that come off of our 5,000 units?
Ms. Love, can you enlighten us on this point?
Certainly, I'll make an effort, the 5,000 residential dwelling units is a function of what happened a while back, when we reduced the overall density, the infrastructure that was governing at the time that said, here's the infrastructure demand, my apologies, it then was released, it released those 5,000 to go elsewhere, because the capacity was there based on those 5,000, but it's not just 5,000, it's 5,000 plus what the future land use map allows in the residential areas, so, what, and that includes whatever was in the campus master plan for each of the universities, because they have to, as part of their campus master plan, look at the capacity currently, so they usually deal with getting information from our Public Works Department, but that 5,000 isn't the only number we have, the 5,000 is 5,000 on top of the current residential density that's allowed.
So the university plans were already accounted for?
Right.
Well, but the university plans...
How about the Jockey Club and all these other buildings that are outside the city that we have no zoning control over, and they wanna go 30, 40 stories, does that impact our 5,000 units? And if it doesn't, then let's get a true figure on how much we can produce out there, I'm totally, I'm chasing my tail here.
The campus master plan that was agreed to indicated that they have no requirement that will tax our system, and that was among other things that aren't gonna tax our system, that was why we debated with those people for three years.
You're talking about FIU, but I'm talking about all the, there's other projects I'm talking about, the Jockey, the Cricket Club, anybody that wants to develop outside the city, does that affect our capacity? And that's my question, I mean, I don't wanna put you on the spot, if you can give me a, call me or something, give me an answer on this.
Sure, what we have...
I'm just chasing my tail here.
We have a water supply plan which, and we have our permitted capacity as well, every year we review that, and our numbers are established, so as long as that development will not have an adverse impact on what we're producing or capable of producing, there, we allow them to build, I'm not familiar with the caps, but I'll research more and give you a call.
Not to be redundant, but I'm gonna be, we're told years ago, 5,000 units is all we can build, okay, bingo, that's the magic number, we came up with this, how do we come up with this number, then I see other projects going on all around us, outside the city, in our service area, and they're building, does it impact those 5,000 units? That's my question, and if that's, if it doesn't impact it...
As long as those units are tied into our water system, that's the question.
Well, if it doesn't impact it, then maybe that's a fictitious number, that 5,000, maybe we should be building 10,000 more units in the city, you know, we kinda like, okay, we can't build more than 5,000 units, well, you know what, maybe we can go 10,000, 15,000 units, it's just like we're shooting ourselves in the foot, so that's what I would like to know how many, thank you.
Alright, I have a question for you, when we finish this water filtration system, what will be the capacity then, the output projected capacity of the Winton Water Treatment Plant?
The, we will still have the same permitted capacity.
Permitted capacity, but what is the actual capacity for this?
We also, in addition to the filter project, we also have a Phase 3 and Phase 4, which will build two new storage tanks, and we have other improvements to make to the water plant, so, once all of the improvements are made, I would say our efficiency can range from 80 to 95% of the 9.3, but it'll take more than just one improvement in order to get closer to the 9.3 permitted capacity.
What's the timeline on those filters getting repaired, where we're not paying the extra?
The filters will be completed June of this year, they'll be repaired by June of this year.
And the further expansion plans, the water tanks, how far out is that?
2021.
2021, okay, that's not awful, alright, okay, enough on that then, Mike, did you have anything?
No, I was just gonna ask the same question that you did about the total capacity.
Right.
But a quick comment to Debbie, now, the 5,000 that we keep drawing around here really has nothing to do realistically with the total amount of capacity of the water plant, correct?
What it was based on was, at the time, it was the future land use map and the capacity analysis that was done as part of the future land use map when it was established at that time.
Right.
To add additional units to the city would require a new infrastructure study to determine the relative capacity, the, what is now the capacity, but what he's referencing, the water supply plan calculates expansion of not just this population here projected in the city, but the population projection within the water service area, so, as long as that drawdown, that permit, they have to, they have to account for all that capacity, both within the water supply area as well, which includes the city, so, that's what that water supply plan does, it makes sure that the water supply is acceptable for the proposed development that is, and population increase, that is other communities that are being served, they look at that, so you'll see that when you go into the water supply plan, it has beyond just the city's population, it includes the water supply planning area based upon the future land use map of those areas, and what that potential density could be in those areas as well, so that's why there's a population projection in there that's bigger than the city's projection.
The bottom line is, if we're seriously gonna grow, we've gotta seriously upgrade the water treatment plant, that's the bottom line, yeah, okay.
And as Commissioner Each mentioned, you know, it's almost like a nuclear meltdown with the aquifer, and if we don't find a way to remediate that problem of saltwater intrusion, and as mentioned, reverse osmosis is something that our current and future city leaders need to seriously consider, and, you know, take a hard look at it and say, let's do it, or let's find funding to do it, be it through a bond or whatever else, any means they can, because, you know, we may end up being the supplier of water for everybody else if we had a reverse osmosis system.
Exactly.
Because somebody else is not gonna be able to do it if nobody else is gonna step up to the plate and find an alternative way to handle the saltwater intrusion in our drinking water.
Alright, I think we've commented on that enough, alright, what else do we have, sir?
That is the last ongoing project, the other links are for projects that we completed during the past three years.
Let me ask you then about the design project, we understand there's a project being worked nominally through Public Works to revamp parking lots on the north side of our downtown commercial district, what can you tell us about that?
That request came in very recently, maybe two, two months ago, we have not secured the funding yet, but we are looking into improving the parking lots and the alleyways on the north side of 125th Street between, well, the downtown area pretty much, however, we have not had the funding secured yet to make the improvements.
Well, when we get to that point, I would want to ask that we look to the future and not the past, and make provisions for electric vehicle charging stations, bicycle racks, and designated places to park motor scooters and motorbikes, the city has a terrible shortage of bicycle racks, we keep talking about alternative transportation, and it's just a lot of talk, we spend millions in studies and we can't put a bicycle rack on the sidewalks, you know, it's, I was over tonight at Cafe Crim, and I'm looking around, and you know... You know, it's, uh, I was over tonight at Cafe Crim, and I'm, I'm looking around, and you know, there's only one bicycle rack between Cafe Crim and City Hall. Just, just one. Just one. Artistic, yes, looks nice, it's pretty, it's one. You know, uh, we're not, we're just not getting the job done on, on bicycle racks. Uh, we, we talk about millennials and how they don't wanna drive cars, and, you know, it, it sounds nice and why we don't need as much parking. You, you can't take a bicycle shopping anywhere in this town because there's no place to lock it up. There just isn't. Who's responsible for bicycle racks? Does that come under Public Works, or does that come under Parks and Rec, or, nobody knows?
Yeah, it, we have a transportation, uh, manager that would fall under his, under Public Works. It's, it falls under my shop as well.
Ms. Love, will you please, uh, draft a memo that we, to invite this transportation manager to come in?
It's John O'Brien, isn't it?
With a special, special emphasis on the status of bicycle parking in the city and what we're doing for messenger bikes and motorbikes. We really need to, to light a fire under that, you know? I, I bought a bicycle last year, and you know, I, I can ride fifteen miles round trip, but I can't go anywhere in the city with it because there's no place to park it, no place to lock it up. You know? And, uh, the, the kinda lock I've got isn't big enough to wrap around a light pole, you see? So, we, we really need to-
Need a bigger lock.
I, I, well, I'd get a chain that's so heavy, I wouldn't be able to pedal the bicycle. So, so we, we really need to, to do something about that. I, I don't know how many centuries that'll take, but I, I, I would like to see some forward progress on that. So Ms. Love, if you'll, uh, arrange with, uh, our secretary to submit a memo requesting Mr. O'Brien to come here at a future time, I'd very much like to have a presentation and explore those issues with him.
Certainly, sir.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, sir?
Uh-
Yes?
Two questions.
Two questions.
Okay. That project on one hundred and thirty-third and West Dixie, first class? I mean, really, it's unbelievable, what a beautiful job, thank you. The covering for the motor pool fence?
Where are we? We, we have a, a quote, a quote-
Okay.
For the windscreen. However, it was asked if we can have something with a logo on it maybe, and we're waiting for that quote to come in. Um, it's been hard, well, um, because of the holidays, a lot of, uh, businesses have closed off.
Okay, but that's still going forward.
But it, we're still going forward with it.
It's not been pushed to the side?
Yes, we're going forward with it.
Okay.
And we're going with the windscreen and not the slats.
Yeah, something of just lock it off, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The windscreen required, I guess.
Between the, uh, the Audi dealership and, and, and the Lexus deal, yeah. That's, that'll look good, just on that one side, that, that's, that's, thank you, that, that's, uh-
And the logo is understandable. Okay.
That, that's-
Thank you.
All right, does anyone have any other questions for Public Works?
Sixteenth Avenue? Did you have any, any coordination with the county on when that's gonna wrap up, or?
Um, I, I, I do not know the exact date, but we coordinate with them and I can get you that information.
They were saying February, but I, 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 I don't, I haven't seen anybody out there.
This is the wrinkle, I thought.
No, I, I don't think it'll be done by February.
Oh.
Yeah, they're just, I drive by there fairly often, you never see anybody out there. So I, I don't know what they're, what they're doing, but they don't seem to be working very hard to finish it. Okay. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a great day. All right. Item B, economic development updates by Sam Blatt, Economic Development Manager. Sam, come on up. Introduce yourself and tell us what you're doing.
Okay, hello, gentlemen. Uh, I'm Sam Blatt, Economic Development Manager for the City of North Miami. Uh, is this on?
They're on, yeah.
Oh, good. Okay, great. All right, well, thank you guys for having me. Ms. Love, Ms. Warren, Ms. Monasty, and Mr. Helm, people of the public, thank you. Um, okay, so I'm just gonna do a quick overview, 'cause I know we have important things to get to. Um, I'm gonna try to also stay in my lane, 'cause a lot of projects and businesses that come in um, have had an issue with the CRA, or some of the pro- things I'm gonna touch on, are regarding planning and zoning and things like that. So, I'm gonna try to, um, you know, speak to some of the economic issues of the-
Well, if we get you sidetracked, that'll be our problem.
No, and, and that's fine, and you guys are welcome to, uh, ask me any questions you want. So I'm just gonna go over two things here today. First is just kinda the overall economy of the city, and then, uh, some of the actual projects that are going on. So, I'm gonna start with talking about the broader economy, which is important to just have a context of our city and its identity. So this is from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, over the last four years. That's the latest data that I have, um, since I got here. And I know it's a lot, it's also kind of the, the starting point of some of your guys' tenure, some of the tenure of the city staff, um, I mean, the city, uh, council. So the household income's gone up, the active businesses have gone up, it's pretty positive numbers on the surface. Um, I will also note about the household income, it's outpaced inflation, and we actually have closed the gap in terms of our median wage compared to Miami Dade County and the state of Florida, and even nationally. Uh, we're still definitely lower than the rest of the county, but we're closing that gap, um, by a few percentage points. The, one of the biggest glaring problems we still have, of course, is that we have a twenty-six percent poverty rate in our city. Uh, for context, that's approximately thirteen thousand dollars for one person in a household. So one in four people in our community only make about thirteen thousand dollars a year. If you do the math, that's pretty hard to live on. So, we have a lot of challenges in our city, but we also have a lot of, um, good news as well. And I will say also that twenty-six percent poverty rate is only issued, um, every ten years from the census. So, we're getting close here to another ten years, so hopefully that number will be coming down in the coming year. And also, I think it's important to note that our property tax revenue has gone up, which means property values have gone up in the city over the last several years, uh, pretty significantly, as you can tell, twenty-two million from sixteen million, uh, and our active businesses, we've gone up by a couple hundred. And then, these are the demographics of the city. I think it's important to highlight the city's demographics, um, as, you know, the people in your community are what make up your business owners, your residents. Um, so, we, these are numbers based off the two thousand seventeen census, um, data. They publish, uh, periodic updates to some information, not the poverty rate, but they do do demographics.
I hate to tell you, I can't read that.
Oh, you can't?
Nope, too blurry.
Oh, is it blurry?
Yeah, when you get, uh, when you get to the smaller print, it just doesn't come out.
Okay, do you want me to read it to you?
Yeah, would you please?
Okay. So, uh, population sixty-two thousand three hundred and eight, according to the census from two thousand seventeen. The median age is thirty-five, which is a younger than average for the, uh, country and county as a whole. And then, um, our ethnicity, uh, also tells the story of a very diverse, uh, city. We have fifty-eight percent of our city is black, uh, or African-American, twenty-eight percent is Hispanic, ten percent is white, and then Asian, and two or more make up about three percent. Um, of that, um, black population, about, um, a third of that, forty-five percent of that is, um, of Haitian ancestry. Haitian ancestry and Latin ancestry are the two largest ancestries of our community, and, uh, we have a very large foreign-born population as well. Almost half of our city is foreign-born, with thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eleven. Um, and then this is also, this actually kinda surprised me how large these numbers were. Uh, the language is spoken at home, forty percent of residents of North Miami speak Creole at home. Twenty-seven percent speak Spanish, and only twenty-five percent, a quarter of our population, actually speak English as their first language at home. So this tells a story, right? And it tells a story about a very diverse, uh, city and community that has, you know, a lot of rich cultures. And I think that's important to acknowledge and highlight when we're talking about our community. And then, uh, this is probably one of the most important slides that I'm gonna present on, um, even though it's, uh, pretty modest here. It's about workforce development. The quality of, of workforce for a city is what's going to determine whether or not a new business comes there. Um, I know, like, Chief H, you've mentioned to me before, you know, we should be targeting, like, a Fortune five hundred company. I completely agree with you that we should. Um, but a challenge with that is that you have to have a skilled workforce and good labor. Uh, that's the number one criteria that businesses, companies, site selectors always cite as the top thing. Not tax rates, not incentives they're giving them, not if they're unionized, or anything like that. It all comes back to, do you have the people that I need to perform the job? And when it comes to North Miami, uh, we're trying to do some things to help boost our workforce skills training, but we're still, I think we need a significant, uh, investment in that. We only have twenty percent of our residents who have a bachelor's degree or higher, so one in five people. Twenty-five percent, a quarter of our population, also do not have a high school diploma. I think it's, um, also kinda correlates that the poverty rate is around twenty-five percent. The, those without a high school diploma is around twenty-five percent. And that I think if we can get people skills training, we can also help lower that poverty rate number, raise that median income number. So we've done a few things over the last year. Um, actually, tonight was an orientation for a free coding class for North Miami residents. Um, I know that there were like a hundred people that signed up. I don't know how many attended, 'cause I'm here with you guys tonight, but I will, uh, follow up tomorrow. Um, and then we've had some job training academies teaching people how to help write their resumes, things of that nature, um, and some career fairs and technical training programs. But we definitely need a more significant and robust, uh, public policy to really try to help make this an issue for our community. Um, so that's just a real quick, brief overview of just some things that, uh, we've seen in, uh, the city when it comes to kind of looking at it from a thirty thousand foot level. So I'm just gonna drill down into a couple of, uh, projects that we've had happen. And these projects that I'm talking about are, are just, obviously, we've had around a hundred businesses come in the city in two thousand eighteen. So, this is not by any means, I'm not gonna go through a hundred slides of every single business we've had. Most of those have been small businesses, less than four employees. Um, but the ones that I'm highlighting here are ones that have had a specific, uh, tie to the city in terms of the CRA providing grant money, or Economic Development Division attracting them, or in some way, there's some sort of public component to them. Um, so, you know, I, I mentioned Planet Fitness here. It's go- it's impermitting, it's going to, at, uh, the Chase Bank Building here at Ninth and One Twenty-Fifth, where you guys are probably very familiar with that site. I first talked to them in August of twenty sixteen, and we've kind of been having things go from there. Uh, it's obviously not a, you know, huge company that's gonna be bringing in hundreds of employees, paying, you know, a million dollars a year or anything like that. But it's an important, uh, I think, first step in trying to help improve our community economic development. By, it's the only gym and fitness center, uh, in the downtown area. The closest one is that CrossFit space over by the railroad tracks, CrossFit Armed. Uh, personally, I'm, I'm scared of CrossFit, so I like, you know, a nice friendly gym like Planet Fitness, and it's only ten dollars a month. So it's good for, you know, folks who are working class, low income as well.
I trust you're gonna have bicycle parking stations.
I will, I will talk to them, that's probably a great idea, with bike racks.
That's what I like, they always say it's probably a great idea, but we never build them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hear ya, that's great.
Yeah.
Uh, I can talk to the franchisee for you and see if they will, I'll let you know.
It would be nice, you know, I'd, uh, I could ride my bicycle over there if there was a place to tie it up, you know?
Yeah, get a, get a pre-workout in. Um, there's gonna be-
The lock isn't big enough for the light pole.
It's gonna be about, uh, twenty jobs. Most of them will be modest wages, ten dollars an hour, but there are gonna be about five or six that are forty to sixty thousand dollars an hour for the GM and the assistant managers. Um, and then, about a million dollar, uh, impact, uh, over a twelve-month period for this project. And I will just, I'll note, I guess, um, an economic impact, um, takes in more than just, it takes in their sales, like how much money they're gonna be making from memberships, um, how much money they're paying in wages, and it also includes induced and, uh, indirect benefits, such as these guys who work here have to go across to Connoisseur and get lunch, so that's raising Connoisseur's revenues. And then, you know, people who are coming to the gym are gonna go shop and eat downtown, hopefully. Uh, so those are, we'd use a, I use a special software called Implan, uh, to calculate this. It's pretty standard, it's what everybody uses for, uh, measuring economic impact. Another exciting, uh, development that's happened in two thousand eighteen, and it's gonna be coming online in two thousand nineteen, are a couple of microbreweries in the warehouse district over there by One Twenty-Fifth and the railroad tracks.
Ooh, it's about time.
Yeah, I first had my conversations with these in June of two thousand sixteen and August of two thousand sixteen respectively. So, needless to say, we've been waiting for this to happen for a while. So, um, they all, they both got CRA grants, they both had to deal with special permitting issues, Derm, 'cause they're breweries in a warehouse district, um, and we're still, the county and city, we're not quite nimble enough for these microbreweries as we'd like to be. Uh, but they are finally going through the permitting and about to begin construction. I talked to both of them, they expect to be open by the middle of the year, at the very latest, by the end.
Are these going to be group hub facilities where you can actually eat?
There will be no food served, but there's gonna be food that can be delivered. So they're gonna have partnerships with different local restaurants and delivery services. Nowadays, like, most people can order on their apps anyway, but they're also gonna have, like, actual partnerships with different businesses. That's how a lot of breweries do it, like in Wynwood as well, is they'll literally just have basically a partnership, where you can order off the menu that they have, but it's delivered to the space.
Are they gonna use the food trucks or something of that nature?
I don't, I don't know if that's allowed.
Parking for food trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, maybe, maybe down the road, we'll see. Uh, but we're, we're really expecting, to that point though about food trucks, what we're expecting and hoping from these two breweries is basically to be the beginning of creating this entertainment arts district in this area. Uh, we think with the mobility hub study that was done, and we've been talking to other businesses that are, have had their ears perked up, because we have these two microbreweries creating some synergy in this area, you know, we really think there's some potential for some capital invested in making it-
Sam, you, you got one twenty-three fifty-five northeast thirteenth-
Yeah.
And then, one twenty-two oh seven northeast, what are they, back to back?
It's, no, it's really weird, actually, um-
They're on two different sides of the railroad tracks.
I know, I know, crazy, right?
Yeah, where are they gonna put the train station?
I, I don't know where they're gonna put the train station, that's a great question. I know that they're looking at different locations. I mean, I imagine it's probably gonna be around the right-of-way on the railroad track, just south and north of one twenty-fifth.
Well, I'd hope that they wouldn't turn around and bulldoze the properties after they get them built. Yeah.
Trust me, if it involves Tri-Rail, which it probably is and not Bright Line, it's gonna be a long time before you see a, a train station there.
Probably be long, long retired, gone from here, yeah.
Yeah, I'm kinda disappointed there's no Irish whiskey in there.
We're, we're excited to see this. This is, this is, is positive.
On, on, on this note, um, with Wynwood, as this evolving, a lot of businesses like this brewery are pulling out of Wynwood. I think, I think the time is really ripe that we start poaching some, some businesses out of that area or, or, uh, getting their attention, that, you know, we can offer you what you had prior to the development stages in Wynwood, right here in North Miami. The small-town atmosphere that once existed and more friendly toward the small businesses. Those businesses are getting pushed out, and there's articles written about it every day, where they're, they're falling victims to large developments coming in there, and, and they were kind of victims of their own success that other people are playing off of, so, um-
It's, it's, uh, involving.
I think there, there's, there's businesses out there that, that we can attract.
Every, every community, every neighborhood's evolving and changing over time. Um, and so obviously Wynwood is transitioning and changing, just as North Miami is. Uh, we obviously are not trying to duplicate Wynwood, I don't think any of us want that.
No.
But I think that your point is well-taken, that I actually just, this week, met with a, um, it was like a mural shop that's very well-known in the Wynwood area, and they're actually looking around North Miami for a location. They were a staple in Wynwood, and now they're saying, you know, maybe we wanna move north where the rents aren't sixty dollars a square foot.
Right.
And you can get that, that cheaper rent. Um, so, I, I think it's a really great opportunity, I agree with you. I wouldn't use the word poach, though, just because we're not, we don't wanna poach from Miami, the city of Miami are, are friendly neighbors to the south. But, for those that approach us, you know, we're happy to accommodate those that are, you know, the reality is they're priced out of the market.
Well, they are being squeezed out, so-
Exactly.
I wouldn't be opposed to you walking the streets of Wynwood and passing out economic development posters from Miami.
Thank you, thank you for getting me out of that hole, Kevin.
I think that would be a, a perfectly acceptable thing for you to do.
I love walking the streets of Wynwood, so, you know, you don't have to tell me twice.
Yes, so, this, this would be a good move for you.
Yeah, thank you, that's, that's great.
Yes, maybe he could, if there was a place to park it down there.
So, um, just some other notable developments from two thousand eighteen, some, some businesses that opened. Again, this is not by any means a comprehensive list, and I don't mean to pick favorites, but a lot of these either had actual city, uh, help coming in, or had CRA money to go through. So, I, I know it's small, so I'll just read it. The first, the big one that we've had kinda come online and reinvented itself is Dezerland. It's this, uh, new, largest indoor theme park in the Miami area. It used to be the Auto Museum, but Michael Dezer moved all of his cars out, and now he turned it into this giant, like, fun zone that includes a lot of different things, like go-kart racing, the ninja lounge, which is like the ninja warrior, um, indoor paintball, gymnastics, an event space with restaurants, uh, pinball arcade, and then-
Is that gonna open, or has it already?
It's already open. In fact, it's also has the largest virtual reality park, where you can go in, like, put on goggles and like, do skiing, and it really feels like you're actually skiing in Miami. And it's already open, so you can go, I think it's like, I don't know, forty dollars an hour or something, but don't quote me.
What happened to the cars?
Uh, so a lot of them moved, yeah, to Orlando.
They're up in Orlando, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's still some cars there. I know he's got James Bond and things like that. Uh, another exciting project, and that's a really great project because it's now gonna have- Uh, another exciting project, and that's a really great project because it's now gonna have a hundred and twenty-five employees at that location. I will say, so, the virtual reality park's already open, uh, the Ninja Lounge is open, the go-kart space is on its way into opening. Uh, they're wanting to do an indoor skydiving thing that I believe they're also working on, so it's kind of like coming on in phases. Um, and that has on its own a twelve-million-dollar economic impact, uh, annually. Another project is the School of Rock, which is a really cool project that I first started talking to, um, the franchisee in early twenty seventeen. Uh, she was interested in opening in North Miami. We found her this location, and it's a, a really great, I think, project for, uh, kids and for education and artistic development. So it's gonna have twenty-three employees and about two-point-eight million economic impact. Uh, another one is, uh, right down here in downtown, the Nomi Grill, which has approximately twenty employees and over a million-dollar economic impact there. That went in to replace the old Mocha Cafe that, uh, had been there for a number of years. Then we got the Wingstop also down here in downtown. Um, Captain Jim Seafood reopened. And they actually filmed an episode of The Daily Show there recently, which was really cool, and it's been like on top of a bunch of charts for Miami dot com and the Miami Times for best seafood restaurant this year, so it's really been getting a lot of buzz.
And is it in the same location?
Yeah, it's the same location, just different owner.
Same new owners, right?
David Gar- David Garcia, who owns La Comarera, Garcia family.
Oh, the Garcia Seafood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have a really big owner now.
Used to be along the Miami River.
Hmm, is that right?
It's the same company that was along the Miami River.
Yes, exactly.
Garcia Seafood.
Exactly, it's the same company, it's the same family. They now have this, it's called, uh, Captain Jim's by Garcia, or something like that.
Okay.
Um, but it's, yeah, it's, it's amazing. I've actually been there since it reopened, it's as good or better than it was.
Okay.
So, uh, and then another cool little one that, that I put on here just because frankly, I think it's a really cool concept. If you like sushi, it's, um, right at One Twenty-third, right before Biscayne, it's called Sushi Lucy, and it has sushi on these little wooden boats that travel around on a river of water, and you just grab a plate and you just pay by the plate. So, some of them are only two bucks, three bucks, five, seven. Um, but, uh, it's really cool. It's right across the street on the south end where like Ricky Ties is and Vega Burger. But on the other side of the street.
Uh, Bren, what's the location? I can't place it.
It's, it's on One Twenty-third.
Yeah.
As you go across Sixteenth Avenue?
Sixteenth Avenue, okay.
It's immediately east of Sixteenth Avenue on the south side of the street.
Okay.
Yeah, it's amazing, so I, I would recommend it.
It's, uh, they have a parking lot where the hotel, the hotel is on the corner.
I was gonna say, because it, wasn't there the Tokyo Bowl there somewhere?
But you can, you can park in that parking lot. It's gotten great reviews in the Herald. The Herald's written it up.
Yeah, it's one of the.
Everybody's written it up. It's a very popular restaurant.
All right.
So North Miami is a lot of, you know, great things, I think, kind of going for recently. Um, and we've got, so all those projects combined, mostly because of Deasirland but are a nineteen-million-dollar economic impact. Now, that's obviously not nineteen million dollars coming into the city's coffers, that'd be great. But, um, that's how much money is flowing through the area, uh, each year. And that's two-hundred-and-thirteen total employees that were created just from these six, uh, projects right here, so.
That's good, that's good.
Sam?
Yeah.
Um, would you highlight the green?
The green?
The ward.
Oh, oh, right, yeah, yeah. I gotta highlight this. So we actually won, and you guys may have heard about this, we won Best Business Climate and Policy in Miami Dade County from the Miami Dade Beacon Council, which is the economic development organization for the county. So, the city's being recognized for its efforts, which is great as well.
Well.
Sorry.
It's, uh.
Sorry, I missed that.
Yes, uh, you, you don't wanna know.
Okay.
Uh, it was, yes, uh, that's, that's good to know.
Yeah.
And, uh, Solomia, yes.
Yeah, so Solomia, as you guys, if you've driven by there, it's kind of coming online. Uh, the two residential towers, I believe, this, the next week, they're gonna start marketing to people who wanna rent out the two residential towers that are up, and they're expecting to have residents in there by March or April of this year. Uh, the lagoon has been filled. Uh, I imagine if you wanted to, you could go and, and tour it as well. It's really cool. It's this giant eight-acre, um, lagoon, and it's, it's really an incredible sight to see. Uh, the Costco is supposed to open in January, it was supposed to open in November, but they just couldn't get it open before the holiday season.
Well, where's the logic behind building another Costco?
Well, they're, they're not building it, they're gonna replace it.
Solomia wanted Costco's location.
Is, is that what's behind that?
That was the whole deal, 'cause Costco owned their land where they existed on Biscayne Boulevard. And Solomia wanted that land, but it wasn't part of the original deal. So, they couldn't make a trade, they had to make a weird trade because they don't really own the land they sit on, have two-hundred-year lease with the city. So it got into a weird swap, but so Costco got, s- ten percent, fifteen percent larger building, more gas pumps. Um, they get the stacking off of Biscayne Boulevard from a traffic perspective. And, um.
Do they get drainage? Are they finally gonna be able to pump the water out of the parking lot?
They figured, they ju- they just got that done, uh, a week, couple of weeks ago.
That's an improvement.
So they'll be, their grand opening will be February sixth.
So then what's the plan for the existing Costco property?
That's, that's up to Solomia.
We have no idea.
Yeah, and that's the North Miami Beach.
That's North Miami Beach.
That was part of the main problem with the drainage, 'cause they were leaving.
That's North Miami Beach, that, that problem.
Beach was very hard to fix their problems.
Yes, uh-huh, okay. So, all right, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, no, no problem. Yeah, for, in terms of the existing Costco in North Miami Beach, obviously, I'm not really pushing anything there 'cause I don't, it's not my, not my territory, but I know that they're still looking around and kicking around some ideas. Uh, and then Warren Henry, of course, is gonna be opening approximately in March of twenty nineteen as well. And then they've, uh, we've met with them, Debbie and I and, uh, Tanya, the director, we've met with Solomia about their, um, next phase, which would be the retail office, um, and they're, are hoping to have like, um, a central, like, park gathering area with a movie theater, that type of development. And they're kind of still in the conceptual phase, although they expect to submit by the middle of twenty nineteen for DRC Development Review Committee for that part of it. Um, and then, just a reminder, Solomia, of course, has a four-billion-dollar economic impact as well, so it's a really.
Four billion, you said?
With a B, yeah. It's a great project. Not currently, but once it's completed, well.
Once it's completed.
And then this one, I'm, I don't gotta spend much time on, 'cause you guys obviously are familiar with this, um, having discussed this plan. And Debbie's shop is gonna deal with the, um, potential LDR updates that will be coming from this mobility hub. Those LDR updates were recommended in the plan. I just bring it up because I think it's a great, uh, you know, development in the city from an economic development perspective, and, uh, can obviously lead, lead to a lot of opportunities. Uh, another, kind of in the pipeline project that we're working on here is the downtown redevelopment, specifically the public-private partnership component. We're gonna try to build a multi-story mixed-use development, uh, spe- on the site, uh, right here at Eighth and One Twenty-Fifth, where there's that service-level parking lot, they wanna turn it into a multi-story, seven-story garage with, uh, some retail on the bottom and either office or residential at the top. The city received a unsolicited proposal from a developer, uh, in October. And so, per the statutes, they're now going to put out an RFP to solicit other bids for those who wanna do a downtown project of some sort with the city. This could include.
This is this corner right here, Eighth Avenue, did you say?
Yeah, and it's part of the, uh, CRA's budget and one of their big policy priorities as well, to have that project at least starting to go underway in twenty nineteen.
Is it the whole block from Eighth Avenue to Ninth?
Uh, no, just specifically that service-level parking lot that's right across from CP and D, right across from City Hall.
Right.
And then, potentially incorporating some of those private develop, some of those private properties that are fronting One Twenty-Fifth. But, again, it's, they submitted a proposal.
Basically, the western half of that block.
Right, exactly. Stopping before you get to the Dollar Tree and, and those projects. So, that's just an exciting development, um, because I think that's the future of our, of our city, that's the future of communities, is kind of this holistic living where you can live, work, and play all in the same area and not have to use your car, maybe use your bike.
Yes, I would hope one could bicycle there, you know, if anybody thinks to put a, a couple of bicycle parking stands out there somewhere, you know?
I think, I think if we get nothing else.
I just can't ride it anywhere in North Miami because there's no place to lock it up.
Necessary, we'll, we'll take a co- up a collection to buy a bicycle rack.
I'd be willing to donate a couple of racks, uh, every year, you know? You wouldn't even have to put my name on it if you just had a plan to put them in.
I think, I think if we get nothing else out of this meeting, we know that.
That expensive.
Bike racks.
Uh, Amazon, a hun- a hundred bucks, okay?
This is my last slide, so then we can move on. Um, it's, uh, some projects in the pipeline, obviously, the Causeway.
Yes, we've heard about that one, yes.
Yeah, so I don't really need to talk about that. Um, and then, uh, the.
Is there gonna be a place to park a bicycle out there? That's so wonderful.
And, uh, so that's an exciting project. There's obviously some other projects that have just come through, through you guys, uh, the other project that, uh, Mr. Gallow was working on at Eight Forty, Northeast One Thirtyth Street, um, which maybe I shouldn't mention, but, anyway, and then, like, um, there's some other projects in the pipeline to come up, but we'll, um, we'll see. But this is the one that's actually moving forward and is going before you guys and the city council. Um, another exciting thing that happened was an EDA grant was awarded to the city to fund a target industry study, which I'm really excited about. Uh, we were awarded forty thousand dollars to conduct a study within the M-one district, which is where like those breweries are going, the area north of that, and then also the C-one area, which is Northwest Seventh Avenue and portions of One Nineteenth Street and portions of West Dixie Highway. Um, the reason why we chose the C-one and the M-one is because it allows for light industrial. And so we're looking for basically, in the light industrial, the industrial, the manufacturing districts, those are what generate the most jobs, the most revenue, the most ad valorem value for the city. So we're doing a, uh, study to determine, first of all, identify kind of our competitive and comparative advantages of the city, what are our assets in these regions, and then what can we target? And how, this is also very important, how do we target different businesses, developers to come in, uh, both foreign direct investment and local investment. So, we'll, uh, be putting out an RFP for that later on this year, in February or March, through our purchasing department. Uh, and then, uh, you know, there's obviously all sorts of businesses we're talking to all the time. Um, I try to go to ICSC in Florida and different, uh, networking events and organizations to try to, you know, schmooze people to come to North Miami and talk about how great we are here. So, I really appreciate your, your time. If you have any other questions, let me know, otherwise we can move on.
Miss Love, schedule him to come back next year in January if you would please.
Yes, sir.
All right, Sam, thank you.
Oh, thank you, guys.
Mister Chair, I think that we should recognize that our Economic Development Manager is the youngest certified Economic Development Manager ever.
Sir, by the Economic Developer, yes.
Thank you, developer ever.
Thank you, thank you, Debbie.
Sam, it's great, it's a great pleasure having you here tonight. Thank you very much. Well, all right, now, let's move on. Last item tonight is review and approval, approval of the two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting dates. You were given your handout. Anybody have an issue? Do these conflict with any election nights, anything of that sort? 'Cause if they do, then they shouldn't be on the calendar, but, you know, you need to.
At this point, at, at this point, sir, the one that we do, that we are aware is the October first, which is, um, the second night, thank you, of, uh, Rosh Hashanah.
Okay.
And, um, I guess in the past, we've actually just moved the date. Um, we don't want to wait until a few meetings ahead.
Yeah.
What we'd like to do is we'd li- like, we can't do it tonight.
Sure.
Because it requires, um, coordination with three different calendars. But, um, Marlene will, at the, for your next meeting, she'll come back with, uh, some availability. Um, and I do know that you had asked us to think about some alternative meeting dates to your standard dates. Uh, that, again, will be quite the challenge because, again, we've got to coordinate with three different calendars. These are standard set. Um, and we put them on that calendar. The only one we'd have to play around with at this point, sir, would be the October first. So what is your pleasure, um, relative to the duplicate dates?
Our concern there is that a lot of times, Planning Commission agendas get really loaded. And you can't give fair time to public hearings because there's too many issues to go into. A given issue can take an hour for a single item. And so, uh, we're, we're reaching the point.